Did you bowl this?
Really?
And then.
Yeah.
So that's kind of true. They were saying.
Are they nice?
Yeah, hold up.
That one, what does we have?
You didn't need to.
Where you all can be going with the living.
That's broad.
What's that?
Yeah, that's broad.
Oh, that's good.
That's nice.
Yeah. Well, they took them off. Sturd.
Heard that.
Heard that.
It turned out they had more than one.
Mary Jo is attending. Virtually, but she's, I don't think she can get. And she vote on the.
She has to be seen and heard.
Did you walk down?
Seen. That's what I thought it was, but I didn't know.
I know, I was just gonna appreciate her saying anything.
Does the one at nine hours?
I believe you are correct. Is there anything else or not? No, I think both those reasons.
That's your problem.
I mean, this is in voters.
I have just something interesting. Certainly. Chill my diet.
Monitor and watch and comment. But can't.
Who cooked it?
I ate them. I did. Now, come on.
He did.
Now, come on. Oh, my goodness, I'm toast. They look great. Thank you.
We don't think that you can vote on the.
No, he made.
You made it.
You did? I know. Why, I don't read them. I'm here the minute.
Wife minutes, she calls mother's cookies.
And they're for you.
During, because that means they got all that.
The son of a feller is don't.
The same tall as her.
Fellers don't count during the sendo.
Thanksgiving.
The rules.
Stayed at our times.
I was trying to do this. Just like, I'm like, I'm the father.
Don't be involved now.
Like, I can get removed.
Okay, so be fine.
Everybody's got a vote.
Can't stay, Iowa stay.
Well.
My wife, I'm making a.
As all the center, he. And send those.
Fall in your office.
Is there a good time for you to stop by? Ah, they're beautiful.
They're good, too. I got.
There are now, we all want to be in on verse.
And then the only two teams they play, their worst anything they lost to. The for both isn't in the.
It's not like saying.
And how they're mad about it. I'm like, oh.
They wouldn't have sleep for a second.
But it had passed him out.
They'll just expand the to twenty two is actually gonna, it'll be the twenty first thing.
And Dwight lost in the way. Boom, forty four. And you.
I lost forty seven.
Fair.
Good.
You can tell.
And one seventy.
She's probably.
One seventy. You're one seventy. Seriously? That's very small. Good deal.
It's not his.
I haven't seen one seventy in a while.
On this for five years.
Very fair. Nine.
All right.
Yeah, on your chest or? You're so. You better. Not a cookie issue.
Are you going to give mouth the mouse with sedification?
No, no.
He was bad.
The frigging over there. This never lied being. No, I've had this for about ten days. I looked at walking pneumonia, just.
There you go.
Listen, water. Do it myself. Thank you.
And it said, I didn't have walking. That's all I need, right?
Frank and beer.
That would help me. That's healthy now, that's for sure.
In the stone place, but great.
You do. Earl's good man. Girls been involved. Yeah, that's.
And then I. Get you out of town.
I forget another cookie. And started. Better get hurt.
He's no question.
Well. How's Steve doing?
Still got the toilets.
It's good.
Oh, they have one game.
Hey. Mary Jo's here. Yes, she really is.
Do you have any she's out there on the screen or somebody that work this way? Mexico. We can keep it on, yeah.
Good.
Well, that is there, too.
Hadn't eaten one. I was like, you start pulling up at home. Hey, it's about six o'clock, maybe a couple seconds before. Any objections if we get going?
Nope.
Uh. Well, uh, all the counselors are here except for Mary. Mary Jo's online and I don't know, is Matt Kofick supposed to be showing up? Has anybody heard? Okay.
There's a vehicle which is pulling.
Uh, he may or may not.
Yep.
Go up, uh. Any changes to the agenda? Any additions?
I think I sent you a couple by email.
About sidewalk. Maintenance or whatever it was, cleaning. Uh, do, if you want to talk about keeping the sidewalks clean. I keep on wanting to poke over this one, but really, I'm just talking to you guys. Um, about this. The snow removal.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth, worth the conversation.
Okay, so let's that. Let's add that under, under new business sidewalk. Well, it's already on their sidewalk snow. Was there something else, Georgia? I don't remember. That's okay. Uh, we'll, we'll add it. Well, if it comes up, we'll talk about it. Um. Motion to approve, uh, to approve the minutes.
Uh, so moved.
You, you, you want to do it that way? I mean, that's okay with me.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, make the vote to approve minutes.
Okay, so.
Our last meeting.
Yeah, okay, fine. Uh, Mary Jo, any discussion on the minutes? Is she able?
She cannot vote. I'm not sure she can. Could she hear us? You know, Georgia? Or she's just observing?
I believe she's listening, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Because she's driving, I don't know if she can.
Yeah, she can't vote because she can't be seen and heard, like I required.
Uh, all, all in favor of passing the minutes?
I'm on second.
Oh.
Did the second?
I was second.
Steve seconded it.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you, counselors. Um. I'm gonna reorder the agenda. To let Mr. Burns go first.
Say, sir.
So, um, first item on your agenda, Eric.
Yep, uh, Woods Edge. They have a. Copy of our proposal. And it includes all the financial terms that. You folks approved the last meeting. Uh, it is also. The email I sent contained the, um. The service agreement, which is sort of the contract that they would be entering into. Uh, as you recall, we haven't had a contract with them since the seventies, so. This is a fairly standard document, certainly in this part of the country, and. Uh, I don't think there'll be any surprises in it. We have not yet heard. Did you guys, I sent it last week. Have you guys heard any? I, I didn't expect it. I basically said, hey. Uh, let us know when it's time to talk, because I know they're gonna want to talk. Walk and talk through the whole document. Um, so I will do a follow up with them tomorrow, but, uh. There, you know, wasn't any great big. Reaction, at least not, not yet, because about a week since. So, I will let you know, and as you recall. The document itself, the, uh, service agreement will be subject to your final approval. So it'll, it'll come back to you for your, for your voter. Any questions on that? Okay, on the, uh. Jewett Street, I think. Marshall, there may be, uh, I know that Kyle followed up with you.
Yeah, your office reached out, so.
What?
Your office reached out, Kyle.
Yes, yeah.
So I'll gather that and send that to you.
Essentially, what we're doing is we're going to. Put together, uh, the lawsuit that you folks have. Uh, uh, indicated you wanted to do. Um, in order to do that, we want to capture all of the evidence that we have that shows how long this property's been out of compliance. Because that will. Um, be in front of the judge to show how long, uh, how many days of fines they should have. And so, I think Georgia indicated to my associate Kyle that she did not have any specific documents on it, and. Marshall, you're gonna have some.
Yeah, we have all those on our report management system.
Right, and I knew you would have.
Export.
And that's why we just. We look at it and we count out the days, we multiply by the. By the amount of the fine, and we put that in front of the judge and, uh. Get a judgment for that amount.
Was there, sir, was there a? Do you only want a certain type of violation, the general ones, or we've got, I know.
Any violations fine.
Okay.
I don't know how you keep them. I suppose you keep them just by a report that might have two or three different violations.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know how. Believers that is, are we talking? Hundred page?
No, no.
I didn't think so. So that's why I was gonna suggest that as long as the reasonable amount, you don't have to. Uh, you know, work your way through it. Just send it on to Kyle and he'll do the, they'll do the counting of the days. They'll put in which violations they were, and then I'm sure he'll get back to you to make sure that he's got.
Okay.
Done correctly. And then that'll. Uh, be in front of the judge and we'll attempt to get a judgment for that amount. And take the next step and the next step and. Try and get, get some pressure on this household. That they can get something done. Without a sale.
And what's the timeline on?
The, the, it'll be filed, it'll be filed this week. The, um. Uh, the defendant has thirty days to respond. Um, we're going to be. Serving by publication. Because we have a, we have an address that is allowable, because. A lawsuit can be filed against a person. At the address that they keep on the county tax record. But I know darn well that that's not gonna get anything, because it's that address. And so, in case the judge is interested, we'll also do a publication. It means nothing more than it goes in the newspaper once you publish. And they are deemed to have been, uh, notified of it, and therefore you can move forward. Most likely gonna be a, uh, a default judgment, which means there is no defense. They are, because they're just not gonna respond. He doesn't have, so we got the thirty days. When they fail to respond, we got, uh, ten days generally, but we just, they will wanna. Um. Take the set for a default hearing. We go in with an affidavit basically from the marshal that says. He swears that the following records are correct, and then given the judge in Anderson judgment. I'd say we'll have a judgment in sixty days. And then we have to decide, depending on how much we're looking at. Do we have a lot of years?
No.
Oh, well. Better part of a year?
Yeah.
So depending on the amount, again, we, we have the. Uh, ultimate tower to have a sheriff sale. The property goes up for sale, somebody buys it. And who is that somebody? Well, I don't know. People aren't buying something unless they know they can turn some money from it, which means they would. Uh, presumably you're fixing up or tear it all down.
Habit debt for humanity has expressed an interest in that.
Good, too.
And, uh, I would. Like to try to give them the edge somehow.
Yes.
But it will be up to the counselors to decide. To go public. The public sale.
Yeah.
Well, we're not out any money per se.
Right.
So. We would take a loss on the thirty or thirty five thousand dollars, whatever the judgment is. And, but they would buy it for a dollar. And. I guess I'd like to. Really give them the edge because of.
And that is exactly what you're doing, because you're getting a judgment for as much as. The law will allow us. Which allows you to go and bid, you, the town, to go bid the amount of your judgment. And if nobody overbids you. You get it for the amount of your judgment, and like you said, it's not cash from the town, it's just an uncollected debt.
So can a town write that off as? An uncollected debt?
Yeah. I don't think here. I don't know that it matters because it's a judgment. It's not like a, uh, uh, a sewer bill that somebody owed, then you'd have to write them off. You don't have to write it off. Uh, because it's a judgment amount that has been supervised by a court and all that sort of thing, so. The rules, usual rules of writing off don't, don't apply. You can do it as you, as you see fit. Somebody could come in and overbid your judgment. Then they own it. And then it would be out of our hands. Unless we want to bid more, but I'm not sure.
Do, do we have? To make it a public bid?
Uh huh. Once you have a judgment, the only way you can enforce that judgment is through a sheriff's sale. So it's literally at the sheriff's office, ten AM on a. Whatever morning and. Anybody that wants to goes in and we would have a representative there who would. Uh, either, you know, Ron goes or whomever, just bids up to the amount of the judgment. And if somebody wants to overbid. Then I think.
That's what.
Problem is that our, our friends at Habitat may not get it, but at least we've got somebody who's putting real money into this thing. Which is a good indication. Nobody's gonna put real money in for them and just sit. Yes, man.
Does the. Property have to be beaded to the town after the sheriff's, after the judgment and the sale?
Yes.
Okay.
And it is done by the process.
And can the, I know the Habitat probably wants it for a dollar, but can they pay the legal fees? In order to do the transfers? I'm asking.
Well, I don't know. I don't know what their policies are.
Habitat is the one that knows Habitat's interest.
Yeah, I mean. It would be a good way to do it. If they have the funding to do that, I know they're not flush with cash, but. You know, I think that's at least a conversation. To have with them.
If they get it. Would they still make apartments out of it or just?
Uh. They understand how it's divided. When they age. And they understand that it was in three units. So what they do with it, uh, whether they convert it to two or. I, I don't know. That's a conversation to have with them.
I know they do single family residences. I, I don't know that they do multiple.
Generally, they don't. But they seem attractive to us, with little possibilities and the idea they sell it as. Condominiums, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah.
That's speculation, but take that off the record. I don't know. So.
Okay. So we will do what we can to advance that ball and, uh. So we're looking at something after the first of the year. Before we know what's going on. Exactly with the amount.
So. Um, he asked me to keep him abreast of the situation, so I'll just say, um. Sixty days from now, uh, February fifteen.
Yeah.
Middle of February.
What, what's the name? Are you talking to the executive director?
Is it?
I forgot his name. I know, I've met him.
Yeah, it, it is, it is. I, I don't know. I'd have to look at my notes.
Yeah, if he wants to call me, I'm happy to.
Do me.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Okay. And then on five oh four Jewett, I don't know that I've got. Direction on that. That's the. Somewhat odd what was purchased by the neighbor, as I recall. It's a rack.
And we went for the water bill?
The.
Oh, water storm.
Water, water.
They, the update on that one was that someone came in, paid the stormwater fees. And said they sold the property, but they did not have the name of who they sold it to.
Really?
And I heard that also. There's a new owner, so. Haven't looked at the records or not.
Yeah, so I thought that was interesting that they had no information on who they sold it to. I'll wait for the county to make that public.
Yeah, how long ago was that?
A half, before.
So it takes about a month for them to transfer? In your experience, something like that on the, on the county record, yeah. So I, I will. Wait for instruction, and I think as we discuss, the way it was owned last time was kind of an oddity. Now maybe it's a little bit. Less of an oddity if somebody bought it for a purpose, well, you're gonna do well. Why, again, why do you buy a piece of property unless you're gonna put some productive use? So.
Just a sidebar to that.
Yeah.
I heard that they were gonna put a camper down there.
Boy. Whatever. All right, so I will wait to hear how you want me to go on that, but. You know, it's, it is a house is. In need of a lot of work. So, uh, it's a couple weeks ago. Love. Uh, any questions on that? Um, anything else? Any other?
Steve, do we, do you want to talk about nepotism at all? While Eric's here. I'm sorry?
Yeah, he was gonna bring that up. That's. That's his about.
Nepotism.
Yeah.
So. Continuation of what we talked about.
Yes, and, and the only thing that I would say is recall, it's only a marriage. Right? And you are not married.
No.
And so it only becomes relevant upon marriage. Um, since you're not otherwise related. Um, and. As long as you're not supervising the person. And there is a clear. Iron plaid. Uh, procedure in place for you to not be in charge of the person you can be married to.
Hmm.
Um, and that's just a, a matter of. You know, making sure that you've got the, the town approval, council approval on whatever arrangement you are. And again, you're not married at this point, so. It kinda only matters if you're gonna be married.
I was trying to be cautious.
Was that?
Just trying to be cautious.
And you're trying to look ahead, like, oh, that's all good. So.
There was some. Disclosure documentation.
Yes, my recommendation is you make a disclosure. You treat it as a conflict. It's not truly a conflict. But people, they go, oh, I don't have a conflict. How can I file one? Well, you can file one. I can file one for any. Reason. It doesn't make a conflict. It's just I'm saying to the world, if you have a problem. You can look at this. I don't care. I don't think it's conflict. So that's my recommendation is put that, uh, as conflict of interest.
The reason I ask is because everyone who's fired signs a document that says that they don't have a relative.
Right.
Working that, and I know that technically it's not a marriage, but when you're in the same household. Riding in the same car, doing the same work, same department, it's very, very close. It's.
It is. It is legally not a problem. Because it is a legal relationship that creates nepotism, not a personal. Re- relationship. It has to be a marriage in this situation for even marriage. That's the legal issue. The whole management issue, that's a whole different thing, and that's for you folks to.
Well, that's.
Make that judgment on.
We're a small department.
Yep.
So DJ says, well, I'm not gonna. Have anything, I'm not gonna be her, her boss or whatever Fred's gonna be. Well, guess what? He's Fred's boss. So. If he says Fred, you know. Let her do this and that. I'm just saying, I, you know, hypothetically. You know, if this was a large apartment. Like the county or whatever, she would be on a completely different shift. And all that. That's what I'm saying. You know, he comes up and says, hey, Fred. Let her do this or that, you're gonna do it.
That, that would be in direct violation of the conditions of that.
Right.
Which would subject me to discipline. And that's unlawful.
Yeah. Yeah, it would, it would have to be a very explicit, very specific. Uh, policy that says this is what's happening, this is what's not happening. I mean, that's, that is the minimum that will be required. And again, that's to cover the legality of it. Management wise, that's a whole different question, and you're kind of raising some of that right there also. And is it, is this a management? Um, kind of complication that is. Something you want to take on as a ten? And that's a reasonable question also, and I think what Steve's getting at is the optics of it, the optics. Oh, yeah, sure, there's nothing legal about it. It's completely legal, but wink, wink, you know? Uh, I don't think that's what you're talking about, Steve, and I think it is a valid concern, you know, so. Uh, it has to be. If it is to go forward, we need to be very clear and well, well publicized, you know, what. How, what the exact relationship is, you know, so. Um, yeah, a further. Um yeah, a further discussion, obviously.
And did you talk to the other deputies about about this? I mean, you.
Yeah, I've talked to them.
Are they, are they in agreement with it?
I mean, I'm happy to leave your room if you wanna talk to themselves.
No, no, I'm I'm saying. You're the boss, have you said, hey, you know, I'm thinking about hiring Sue?
Those those were the first people that I talked to, because at a department our size, that's not how you create good relations by springing something onto them. And I would not hire actually any officer without. I mean, with our size, really without kind of group. Consensus and discussion. That's just not a good way to run a small apartment, especially. Hi, Mary Jo, we can see you.
Yeah. Can you see me now?
Wait, we still got that. Eyes on the road, girl.
I am. I even put my glasses on.
Okay, uh are we, do you wanna?
Anything else?
We we need to talk about this? The nepotism?
I was just gonna make a comment, as long as it's disclosed and documented, I think we're. You know, we're doing our, you're putting in part a good big effort to be transparent about what's going on. Oh, that's funny.
Myself, there's nothing personal, but I I agree.
Yeah.
Uh Mary Jo, do you have anything to lay in on?
Yeah, I I'm having a hard time with it too. I I think it's just too close a relationship. Especially for the uh marshal. Um to be in charge of everything and have somebody that he's living with, working underneath him, and that's. Nothing against you personally, BJ, it's just. What I, when I've worked at Purdue and otherwise, they did not let uh people work in the same departments. If they were um related. So, and I know you, it's not legally related, but you said you've been living there for ten years, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's something that I kind of frown on, but. And I I can foresee. There'll be talk, I mean, you know, Battleground's the best talking town in the county. There'll be talk about it there too.
And just to address it for the recording, so, um because I don't know if everybody has the machine in front of you, this was to address. Some of Mr. Hans' concerns, there are repeated concerns about lack of visibility during certain times. Uh and also his concerns about the cost of equipping a new officer with uniforms and equipment. Uh uniforms equipment costs around three thousand at a minimum to uh. Get an officer fully equipped, that doesn't count the radio, which is several thousand. Um and then in addition to that, uh they have to be sent to an academy. At a minimum academy of twelve weeks, like a town marshal academy, that's around thirteen thousand plus for uh labor. At a uh regular tier one academy, that would I would assume be sixteen plus, that's uh sixteen weeks. Uh I was trying to find a solution for those concerns of of Mr. Hans. Uh for an existing. Sorry, go ahead.
The other part of that is, and we've talked about this previously. We can hire people part-time that are already working for full-time for, say, like Tippecanoe. Tippecanoe County Sheriff's Office. And not have to pay for all of those expenses, we might. Have a couple expenses, but when we talk, Steve and I talked to, and I don't remember the gentleman's name. He says there's always guys looking for part-time jobs.
That was Chief Deputy Ruley, and and. That was addressed on the letter uh as well, so that's, this is a hard time to find somebody for is. Very limited hours, because our budget won't afford more than an extra few hours a week for this person, so. Uh to find someone that's willing to work just a few hours several times a week. Uh and it was also full-time somewhere else is is challenging. Especially for our salaries. And we still have to equip them, yeah, with everything, even if they're from another agency, we still have to buy. All of the equipment because they're uh. Uh they're not gonna be able to wear what their uh full-time employment provides.
And you're saying that Sue already has all the equipment?
Yeah, it's a reserve officer hired by former Marshal Burke. She has everything that she's sharing, so just be sliding that in the spot, the reason that I bring up the paid status. Is because she's attended a uh academy which provides a waiver for uh for the actual basic academy. Uh she paid for that herself, um and so she'll lose that ability if she doesn't switch to a paid status. Uh with a department at some point in the near future, so she'd have to look for another department to not lose that academy. Uh training. Which none of us would want, I think, but.
So it sounds like uh the choices are stay with somebody you know, which is Sue. Or uh and has all the. Uh needed equipment or uh go outside the department with a potentially unknown resource and. Um incur additional expenses.
Uh and and in terms of like people talking concerned, uh she's already working, she's already out doing things in uniform, she's seen that. Festivals, uh special events that we do. The the difference would be the ten hours a week paid.
Uh unrelated, uh how many? In in terms of female personnel. What was the percentage of other departments? I mean, do they have, just depends on the agency, um.
Actually, I'll let Fred address this, he worked at a bigger department. It's just sort of, uh it's it's approaching close to ten percent, you know? But the goal for twenty thirty is thirty percent in thirty. Moving forward.
So adding a female. Is a plus. I'm, any further discussion? Mary Jo?
No.
Okay, uh do we have to make a decision on this tonight? Are we, are we expected to make a decision?
That's the the board's call, if you have further questions, I'm happy to answer that, I I will need to give her some kind of answers so she can. Decide whether to to work elsewhere. Sort of patient, we have labs.
Councillors, what do you want to do? Do you want to do a vote on this? Um? Table it?
I'd like to table it.
Yeah, Matt's not here, I think we need to take one till all of them show up.
Fair enough. Uh. Let me see, wait that. Yeah, okay, okay, um table to the January meeting, uh great, um moving onward.
Final thing, sir, um Georgia had sent me an ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixty-five, which I did look at, looks. Like it's all in good shape. Uh for whenever you're ready to pass that, that has to do with. The authorization to spend general fund money on promotion for uh town interests and. Festivals and all sorts of things like that, so in good shape whenever you're ready for it. Anything else?
Six fifty-eight, I wasn't sure if we were getting it tonight, so I didn't pick the last number.
Oh, yeah, 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 sixty-five, right. Twenty twenty-five, sixty-five, yeah. Uh any questions that I can answer for for I? Any questions for uh Mr. Burns? Thank you all, have a good meeting.
Merry Christmas.
Seems early, doesn't it? Yeah, only for Christmas. Your wife will listen.
BFNS. The three musketeers, there you go, who's who's up?
We're here. Thank you, see y'all.
Where'd you park at? Where'd you park at? Good job, because I blocked somebody in. Hope I can beat him out.
Could start with a project update on phase two and three of the Gateway Project, uh related to report on that, design continues. On that, we had a project meeting with Bowen earlier to kind of give them the same report that design is underway. Fieldwork from our survey crews have been completed, so they're doing the office processing of that data now. Uh the next field crews or personnel that you might see out in the field. In the coming weeks or months is likely to be uh utility. Uh coordination folks, we're looking to get work plans from all the. Affected utilities, gas, electric, whoever in the area, so we can get uh a whole list together for those crews to. Then move on. A whole existing utilities that may or may not be in conflict, and then geotechnical investigations will be the next. Field crew uh that you'll likely see. In the coming uh three, two months out for collecting subsurface data for us to be able to. Vet the installation, build the the pipes that are going. So. Uh. Making good progress on that design for Bowen to be able to put together guaranteed maximum prices for those subsequent phases. They did want to note that we're probably looking at a February or so timeline for them to be able to have personnel available to. Put that pricing together, so. We've got that programmed into our schedule at the end of that. And and there.
We're not gonna be done before then anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Other updates on phase one construction there, I think Ron and I spoke a little bit last week and you guys, a few of you were copying on some emails back and forth. Uh hit a snafu on the delivery of the new pumps. Gorman Rupp, pretty late in the game, said that it's coming in. Uh Jim, so later than expected, Bowen. Is reconnecting the existing pumps, they should have those back online later this week, and they did want to emphasize. Um they're taking care of them, so. Operationally, Ron, they'll work with whatever you need or whatever you need to keep things running, but they wanted to emphasize that. They'll take care of it. Uh this isn't. Isn't a huge worry on there, and they'll make sure that the pumps are operating as needed to keep service going. Uh if there's any continuation of temporary measures needed, they'll make sure that those are those are. They'll continue working on the side, getting those prepared for the pumps. When they do arrive, uh but we. We have tried to have some conversations with Covellin, they're the rep for. Gorman Rupp, I have not been able to contact them, but. Uh Bowen was earlier today, and had a pretty frank and. Conversation with them and what expectations really should be.
A a frank conversation, huh?
Yeah.
That sounds interesting.
Trying to be polite with how I present. So as soon as we get any updates on that delivery date, we'll make sure to pass those along.
What about Hawksnest?
So Hawksnest, I got a little bit of some. Information from uh Matt this morning on status there. I had made a site visit prior to Thanksgiving, uh the gravity sewer connecting the new wet well into the existing. Uh piping was underway, I'm told that that's been completed. Uh the valve vault structure is scheduled to be set later this week. And then Matt is expecting an update from their electrician on when that. Electrical connection work, tying the new load station on when that should happen. Um. He's expecting to hear back from the electrician this week and. We hear how it goes from that.
No completion date, yeah.
No. Most of the work that Rock and Dirt. Is completing has largely been completed, the electrical line is so.
How much more did we got left? A year? What was that one?
Year and a half.
For what?
Or ten, the load station.
How many more?
Year and a half, two years.
Next item. Any any questions on that topic? Chris. Thank you.
Are there any other items we have here? I see London Witty with financing, I don't know if they've got a red today or if that's something he needs. Way in on the bets, that's there.
I didn't ask him to attend, he's waiting, at this point, waiting for the agreement to come back. From UMH to know for sure how to proceed and everything they've got, just. Sitting there in files and they'll finish it as soon as we have that.
Um. The other item that was discussed at the last meeting is that detention pond back behind Shawnee Ridge. We did find the original construction plans for that project on the county's database. Sent those grading plans on to the town and to. Uh map with Rock and Dirt, so I don't know what. Further support BF you need from BFNS on that. The discussion on maintaining or rehabbing that pond is on the table and, you know.
Yeah.
Do you know, uh talking about the easement all the way to along, do you know if it's been restored to its natural state?
No, it has not yet, that'll likely be like the. One of the last things that Rock and Dirt does, and with the time of year it is now, it'll be spring when he does final seeding restoration.
I I thought that was probably the case, and that there's some big soil disturbances along part of it. It put temporary bridges in or whatever.
Yeah. No, that's on his list for restoration, how the weather is really available for that. Uh I think that's probably the similar timeline he'd like to look at for the pond restoration, he just needs. I I guess I don't really know what he needs.
That's being.
If there's survey or if there's other field data that he needs collected, we'll be able to get a. Our marching orders on what the extent of restoration is.
In the hands? Any questions for BFNS? Mary Jo, any question for BFNS?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You have anything to say?
Chris did a good job, um appreciate the neighbors um bringing some information to the last meeting that helped us. Uh have more clues what what exists for the existing plans of variable time with the county. Really, what's different between what was originally built on those plans and what exists today is what Matt needs to. Have somebody scope or him scope himself to be able to say this is what this extra work's gonna cost. And when the best time to do it, while he's still here, while they're still on site, and now another another mobilization by a different contractor. To be in. The same or or next to the same sandbox. So his restoration is adjacent to and.
Yeah.
Uh alongside this area, so. Um since it probably will be the spring, it would be a good thing to get pushed forward so that if the town is going to. Rectify the pond and bring it back to its original state that it happened. You know, in the spring on that.
And and you will have all of that information that he needs prior to that, no? No?
We have the existing. Proposed plans that were used to originally build it, but someone needs to, Matt or someone needs to assess, okay, what's different between what's the current state? Uh how much material needs to be dredged out? Um I'm not saying there's design work that's needed, but it's. The assessment needs to be. So that when. He performs the work is. Done in the right manner, so that the pond is the right size or it's what it was intended originally to be.
So councillors, what I'm just hearing Dave say is that. We need to get some specifications from Matt. So he knows exactly what is expected of him, but. We need to have somebody come in and do an assessment of what needs to be done, do I have that right?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's an additional survey that should be done of the pond as it sits now to know that it's supposed to have this many acre feet of storage, and it only has. However, much less of that because it's been silted in, for example, or to confirm it's not that much, it just needs to be reshaped and pipes need to be cleaned out. That's.
Can you do this?
We can.
Do do you want to have BFNS go ahead and do this assessment? Because I don't want, I don't want to see. April come along and say, oh, we didn't get the assessment done, so. Um.
Well, I think in fairness too, what Matt's responsible for as a part of the already owned contract off this project. They should be doing that and not. Have that be part of the pond restoration.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
Absolutely, so uh how would you like to proceed?
Um. Task for for that. Uh effort to provide any kind of drawing, it's not really gonna be plans per se, but it will be some kind of detailed drawing to say. Here's the areas that need to work and what the specifications are for that work and restoring it too. Um. These plans were from the nineties. So. They're in between old and really old, so there's, they're not bad, but there's not as detailed as what we would put together for. The development of this nature today. Um so we're gonna have to do a little bit more digging to. Um connect those dots, um. There does appear to be easements for the flow path for. The stormwater system to convey the water from the streets and the other lots. I believe past your guys' house. Um but there's other things that. May need to be a part of this work that might be phase two, or it might be something to take care of all now, just to make sure that. The entire stormwater system is working the way it's supposed to. The entire stormwater system is working the way it's supposed to originally for the original design, if that makes sense.
To me, it makes absolute sense and it'd be nice to make sure if we're gonna go to the effort to correct it, make sure it's corrected.
Pulling.
Properly and pulling, so. Let's have a motion to offer at B F S to give us a supplement or whatever.
Well, why don't we just come next meeting with the supposed task order?
Okay, okay.
You can see what that, what we think the effort's gonna take and if that sticker shocks you or if that's, oh no, that's pretty reasonable, we can go from there.
We need a prize too, hold it.
I'm sorry, a prize?
Yeah. Come up with that first and the scope that goes with that and we can talk through the detailed elements that we'll. Put our heads together and list out for you and then what that timeline and cost would look like to get that in front of Matt so that he could then. And we'll probably work with him a little bit, um, and making sure that we're not.
It'd probably be good to schedule a site visit with Ron and then someone from our stormwater department, since they do a lot of these.
I would concur.
Yes, and Matt even.
Yeah.
Let's hope it's not frozen over.
Whatever it is.
Okay, great.
Cause it's intended to be a wet detention pond, which I wasn't a hundred percent, I'm being honest, I wasn't a hundred percent.
I was surprised when we saw that, you know, originally.
It's supposed to have water in it all the time.
Is, is, there's water in it.
Parts.
Parts, okay. Mary Jo, were you gonna say something?
No, I just was saying wow.
Okay.
Just it amazes me that it got in that bad a shape and nobody paid attention.
Well, it's. And. Inaccessible area.
I'm sorry.
So if it was the front part of the, the entrance of the subdivision, you saw it every day, you came out from. Yeah, the neighborhood, it had a lot different maybe, but.
Any, anything else? Anything else from our gentleman here, okay? Uh, in that case, Georgia, if you wanna talk about items and. You'd like to talk about?
Have the appropriations. For this period of.
I apologize guys.
And New Year.
If you guys need me, I'll move.
November eleven to December eight, this is the. What you have in front of you is the summaries, most of these were on the detail sheet that was provided. By email. Any questions about please?
You have motion to approve, right?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, uh, things from the Beverly Hills two thousand eight or Beverly Hills to December eighth, two thousand twenty five for. A hundred eleven thousand dollars, hundred eleven thousand nine dollars and ninety four cents.
Motion by Chad, I must be on. In, in a discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, counselors.
Salary ordinance needs to be passed in some form tonight. The council and a clerk. Salaries cannot change. In the year that they're paid, so they have to be set now. Anything else, if you decide to do something differently, like in your H R manual. Or any of those benefits, you can make those changes next year as long as they don't affect me or the council. And I'll let Steve. Take it from there. We, we worked on this, we, we had a draft of it at the last meeting, there were some changes. I've had to change section two because in twenty twenty six, there's actually. Twenty seven pays. And I had to set that up for myself so that I could be paid that extra pay. Even though it won't be any extra money, it's one less paid in the next year, but the. January first falls on Friday, our H R manual says we'll pay it. The day before holiday when the banks are closed, so that means that that twenty seven pay gets paid out. On my twenty six taxes. So that's the change in section two. We revised the ranges so that the departments had a little more on the upper end. To manage their budgets. We got a message from B J about section. Six, the police department. Instead of trying to name individuals, we just name positions. With the range and I would need a statement from B J. To.
Insert, insert your card.
For the name. Thank you.
I am sorry.
I have to have something to relate to the person's name, but for the purpose of the salary ordinance, uh, job description gets arranged and have been that.
It would be four dollars eighty seven, right, or negative.
The information I got from B J didn't include the crossing guard of the I D X. On this most recent information that. Was provided to the council, so please look over section six and make sure that that works for. This. Addition of the salary coordinates.
Yeah, that's a two dollar an hour increase for crossing nerves. And that assistance, I think that's.
That's what they're at now, I didn't.
So they're fourteen, okay.
But, uh, so the section. Seven. The adjustment from last year was the, the premiums. Or family or spouse coverage or dependent coverage is a little higher, went to fifty percent of the premiums. Right now, for example, healthcare, the healthcare is about, what do you say? Almost eight hundred dollars a month for the lowest one, right? You were looking at that with Jansen and the lowest, mine's the highest category because it's on age. So it would be.
You know what, the total, what it was, it was four thousand, four thousand seven hundred a month.
Yeah, about lower health coverage for the three of us. We did not change what is covered. So health insurance, short term disability, long term, uh. Or life insurance. And dental, those are covered. The uniform apparel did not change. Uh, holidays did not change. The P T O, we reestablished. Over twenty years, it got, it must have been a typo, got left off of last year's salary ordinance. And we just made sure that it was reestablished. If you're here over twenty years, there's a higher level of P T O. The P T O, the parole for part-time employees was a little different, but it, I don't think there was any change in there. Carry unused vacation to the next calendar, calendar year to a maximum of two times your annual parole rate. Right, so if you get two weeks of P T O, you can take. Four weeks into the year. Section ten was overtime and the one thing that we might go through our H R manual and change next year, Steve and I talked about it today is. Holiday pay, we wrote, don't really address overtime for holiday, so if you work on a holiday. Some organizations give time and a half or double, we just don't address that. So I think, um, if we don't put that in there tonight, we might go back to it next year, update the H R. Employee manual and update the salary ordinance for that. The potential for year-end bonus is nothing.
We need to, uh, a, a, any questions on the salary ordinance?
No, I'm. I have one correction to the name though on a, on section six, uh, on the time. Deputy and deputy marshal are the same thing.
So section six is going to read chief deputy instead of deputy marshal.
Correct.
So noted. Do you have anything more, George, on this?
Is, is the, also, uh, sorry, real quick, is the, uh, twenty nine hours, uh, currently, we're doing thirty. Like, is that? Creating a.
Which, which, which section?
Uh, still on section six, so. Front end working up to twenty nine hours per week. I've been working up to thirty. I don't know, I, wha- what was the difference between this twenty nine and thirty, that's my question, uh. But I, I obviously want that changed and changes so that I'm not violation. I don't know what.
Okay, the reason I changed that is because it says not more than thirty hours a week. So there was some conflict about. And we manage our schedules at thirty hours or not. So.
Yeah, so.
When it says like up to thirty hours, does that include the thirty or not include the thirty? But it's, it is, um. After I did that, it was, it's still a management decision. Whether or not you're gonna allow benefits at a level of hours, but. There again, you might want to consult with somebody whose main thing is H R. Is it up to thirty hours, does it include the thirty hours or is it? Of twenty nine and below and at thirty hours, the wage and hours, are you different?
I, 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 I understand the distinction, so, uh, if there's no objections to just changing wording to thirty hours or less, that. Alle- alleviates any. Any question?
Can we say on average thirty hours or less, that way if they work less than that one week, they can work more to balance.
I don't know that that works. I don't know for sure. I wish, I wish I could say that I didn't, that I don't know. Because at some point when you're consistently or more than half the time or, you know, at what point do you say, yeah, this is not really a thirty hour job?
You do sixty hours a pay period.
I'm sorry?
It'd be sixty hour at a pay period.
Uh, don't see why it couldn't be.
That way. Yeah, that's how I've seen it done before for nurses and stuff, so as long as you don't go over that pay period. You know, if it's. Of six twelve hour shifts, you know, because it's thirty six hour. For them, what I'm saying, and that would alleviate the special events issues, some weeks you'd have to work more. Other weeks it won't have a special time.
If it was phrased over two week pay period, six hours or less.
Say pay period, yeah, working up to sixty, up to sixty hours per pay period. That's Georgia, we're working not more than six per day.
Now, don't feel me a different thing if they work like thirty two, thirty three hour one week, does it?
That's the part I, I don't know what the federal wage and hour is, I don't want.
So if we get now with that and then.
I would go with it till you find out.
Cause I know a lot of these places, if you work thirty two hours, you have to work, you know, thirty two, you don't get benefits. Alright, so that's why I'm saying if they work thirty three or thirty four, does that?
You could, but, but if they come in and audit and find out that it's more than. They consider appropriate, then you, then you have to do something about it.
You wanna cross that bridge if it ever rises and just.
It's pay period though.
It's not on a week or some period.
Yeah, that's your federal accounting.
Well, that's my fault anymore.
We, we had, we had a super period, we'll Google that.
Right.
So can we change the wording to reflect sixty hours for pay period or less? Sixty hours or less per pay period, does that cover it?
I, I think so.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think so.
Ready to discussion on salary ordinance?
Uh, I just wanted to confirm, sorry also that, uh. Uh, the uniform allowance that that, uh. The discussion we had that in the past, uh. That still stands for. The discussion in the past was that, um, Tom, did it feel that police or alcohol workers, that they fall under that category? Even though we get pretty bold sometimes, but, um. The, the decision was made that any, anything that's worn for, uh, for the uniform would be an acceptable expense, is that still? Thomas's view.
Seems like, uh, on the surface without thinking too hard about it, seems like it's a reasonable comment.
I would consider these both, yes.
Does, does the wording need to be changed to?
It does because the section eight where that is covered says. That it's six hundred and fifty dollars per person to sewer plant street department employees, so if you're adding another department. It needs to be identified or. Just say all employees.
So I see that, that changed now, you know? The. The main concern is that people aren't paying for their own, uh, work clothing. I don't, I don't want anybody to have to pay the worker.
So the thing about the sewer plant is that they are eligible to return in. Or clothing that is ruined by something that has happened on the job and the steel toe shoes which are required. By the OSHA, um. So I don't know how you would define that for another department, I mean, for sewer, it's pretty easy. But for the others, it's not. For police, I wouldn't be worried as clear cut, they already get almost every uniform. Piece of gear except shoes, so what's left?
Well, I, I was told that, that the previous meeting that, uh, or in the past about this, that the shoes boots would be included, those are not. I don't wear these as a fashion statement outside of work, so, um, can police be added to the list of department names?
Comments, counselors?
So, you want to add boots or?
No, he wants to add police department.
Or uniform means, who's sexual?
Is it gonna be the same dollar limit or is that gonna be?
I, I don't see why it wouldn't, our stuff's more expensive and we're also wearing it out.
So Steve, it's adding sewer to. Sewer plant, street department and. Marshal department or police department.
So six hundred and fifty dollars per person for the police department?
Yes.
It just adds a name, it just adds a name to the department. Plan, street department, police department.
Mary Jo, you got any, uh, thoughts on this, can you hear still?
Well, she muted.
What?
She's muted.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, Mary Jo, I had, where you muted when you were going through the toll booth, so you can unmute now.
Mary Jo, did you hear some of the discussion?
I heard all the discussion.
Good, and you have, what is your perspective then?
Well, I'm, I'm curious. We already suit our policemen completely, correct? With the exception of. Sock, shoes and underwear. So.
Doesn't that come out of their, uh, budget?
I don't know.
It does, it comes out of the budget.
What, what, would that come out of their budget or would it come out of the general fund? Cause where does it come from for? Um, for the sewer people?
It's currently from the.
The sewer department, they split that between MBH and Sew. Because you never, you, you really can't say what department it was, I mean, I could.
Right.
Assign it all to sewage, but their wages are split, so I just split the expenses as well.
And what I'm asking for to be added, have our name added to this with the street department is, because this is the standard practice. Uh, across law enforcement agencies. I mean, our clothing does not get worn. Outside of, of work would make us. Brand safe.
Other comments, Mary Jo? I'm not clear where you're at with this.
I'm not clear where I'm at on it either.
I know where you're at, you're on I sixty five.
Yeah, well, not yet, I'm still ninety four, but.
I, yeah.
Um. I guess. It would come out of their budget to do it. Would it come out of the police budget?
Yes.
I mean, apparently, right, so this, this wouldn't really give us any.
So if he, if he wants to use his money to. Pay for more clothes and. Instead of hours for policemen, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
So the allowance.
If, if it's.
For clothing that gets replaced that was. Um. Under protective equipment, it says that you can buy reflective, uh, protective equipment, you can buy that. Buy an air protection, steel toe shoes, gloves, coats.
Right.
Your best, all that's already called out. Without a limit on your. Dollar amount, if you as a department have time to spend. The money to outfit everyone, I guess it's already in there as long as we put in.
For simplicity's sake, then I'll just keep buying what everyone needs, uh, but so the, the board, the town are aware that includes boots, these are, these are work patrol boots.
Work outdoors, including I sixty.
So I would say just leave us off of here, then we'll just keep. If it's not gonna be in addition to our budget.
If we have this discussion, if it's a. If it's an allowance. You have to provide me that amount that you're spending and the employee pays the, the folding. You call it protective equipment, then you buy it out of your budget. You don't give them the money, they don't. You choose what it is they buy, you buy it from your budget. And then it's not something that we have to withhold, but if you say, okay, everybody gets six hundred and fifty dollars, go out and shoot your items, give me the receipts. Then you have to give those to me and I have to withhold on that amount of money that they spend.
Now, would that money be in addition to our current budget or would that come out of our current budget?
Yeah, well, it comes out of whatever you have for equipment or supplies. It's a supply item, not an equipment item, because they're used, uh, they've.
So still our burden system, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no benefit to this for us. So ignore that request. Sorry.
But now I'm curious if, uh, if Ron buys the six hundred and fifty dollars of clothes, that is that treated as income?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I thought, you know? Okay, so the, all that, figure, ignore, uh. More, more for the salary ordinance, moving on.
Well, sorry. They, uh, if we go over, for officers that are going over sixty hours pay period, this might come up. If there's an investigation, this has happened before, where there's numerous follow-ups needed, or if there's a particular issue where. Extra patrol is being requested by people in town for whatever it might be, um. If there are, or training, if there's times where we have to go over sixty hours pay period, put those extra hours, be considered comp time instead.
Be like flexed as time off as opposed to.
Yeah, I mean.
If you want to identify a comp time policy in the HR manual, yes, but right now there isn't one.
Okay, so we could create one.
And that just with the state or whatever, because I'm, I'm depressed on earth, no such thing of comp time.
Most places don't use it.
City mafia option to me, I know all of my, my, uh, myself, the police does that.
I think it's pretty stand up there for you, kind of. We all use it.
You do have to, if you do use it, you have to call it out in your HR manual and your salary because it's a.
So could we add that line in for the salary ordinance, since that has to be voted on today?
It doesn't, because. Anything that affects you can be carried into January and update your HR manual and then execute a revision to your salary. But I want it done in that order because things have a way of not happening from manual and it has to be right first before you go to the settlement.
So where, where do we stand? Are we gonna table that right now and make sure it's added to the HR manual?
You know, be a revision.
Yeah.
Next year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Take it to January's agenda and, uh, somebody bring a. If you've got access to.
I have the point.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll pull up the provision of the city mafia.
Is that it for the salary ordinance, Georgia?
So on section eight, you quote that in your request on that.
Correct.
So right now, the only change is in section six. Our police department, part-time employees working sixty hours or less per pay period.
Yeah.
And a chief deputy, not deputy. And are the salary ranges adequate for your intent for? This year?
They're, they're adequate, um, but I, I feel like to be competitive, um, if I'm still able to set those rates. Then those will be. I'll recommend those be increased in that. Not the ranges, but I'm sure something.
How we doing?
So, um. Are you staying with the town marshal? That's different than what was provided to you on that one today, so what are we doing with that?
So.
The three percent was. Placed in there. To get you out of the position of giving yourself a raise?
Yes, I'm applying, no raise. But I think I recommended a new increase.
You recommended no increase, so what does a council want to do?
If you're glad your counselors, uh, give, uh, the police department a budget, a percentage increase, is that the right question?
No, no, the.
Yeah, the town marshals need to set.
Yes, unnecessary.
Rate for the town marshal.
Matter of fact, he knocked himself down five cents. What's that? Oh, never mind, no hourly increase, okay. I was looking at, I was sort of at, uh, Fred.
I've, I've lost track here a little bit, but, uh, is everybody good with what this, with the wording is?
I mean, so the. Yeah, I mean, whatever you guys said you want to do with that, um, I will refresh the memory of more that the, uh. The total salary budget was one sixty seven, so say, um, it was reduced down by twenty thousand, but I was told that it's there for me to. Increase, so.
And how is that documented anywhere other than minutes, meeting minutes?
Uh, I don't know if the detail that was documented that's recorded and.
It would have been nice to know exactly what.
One forty seven is what is budgeted this year.
True, the.
So I think you'll have to go with that for now and do an additional appropriation. If you decide to change that amount.
I just wanted to plan to see that that might happen if, uh, the board's considering a federally relevant.
Uh, may the minutes reflect that commentary, okay, that, um. There might be an additional appropriation to recover that twenty grand. Uh, in future budgets. Expenditures, uh, anything else on this, on salary?
Uh, so what I, what I understood, excuse me, was that the, the proposal from the town market was. That he wasn't proposing a salary increase for himself, he was leaving that up to the board for the salary increase.
Are we giving other employees a salary increase?
Very person.
What?
Three percent.
Three, um. It seemed that we should be equitable across the line, across the board.
I agree with mentioning that.
Three percent?
Three percent, so move.
That's for the, that's for BJ.
I believe so.
Cause he's.
For everybody.
Yeah, he's already given rest and raise, correct? Correct, okay.
Some of the others may have more than this is simple.
Mary Jo, I forget about you being up there.
You're okay.
So you, you, if, if, if you need to make a comment, you need to just jump in here, gal.
We can see the USB cord right now.
Yeah, sorry about that, cause I'm.
He keeps coming down, that's alright.
I set it down, yeah.
We, we know you're there, you, you are visible, so you can vote, if we can see you and hear you, you can vote.
Okay, any, a- anything else on the salary ordinance? Uh, uh, thank you, Fred, for pointing that out. Guests, thank you for coming. Uh, wait a minute, wait, any comments before you leave?
No.
No input?
No.
No glad tidings?
I'm there, Chris.
Thank you, thank you. Where do we stand on this discussion? Are we about done on the salary ordinance? I'm gonna give the, the guests, you know, I'd give a little witness. Are, uh, Georgia, are we done with this, with the Georgia, with, with the salary?
Unless you have any more questions, about it?
Um, we have, yeah, one other item on, with regard to, uh, year end bonus, uh, what are we gonna give them?
We gave what, two fifty, two hundred, two fifty last or what?
I don't recall for certain.
I guess, well, I think that's what we gave them. Was it, uh, fifty dollars? No, it was fifty. No.
I think it was a hundred. It was like seventy.
I don't know, I. That seems awful cheap to me, I thought we were more generous than that, but I don't, I don't remember.
I love it. Have that same problem. My kids tell me all that.
Well, in any case, while Georgia is looking up that, is that what you're doing, Georgia? Uh. What would you like to discuss?
It was two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred.
Maybe two fifty?
I, yeah, it's a fifty.
Are you good?
With what, two fifty?
Yeah. Yeah. Georgia, uh, Georgia, I mean, uh, Mary Jo, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think that's great.
Okay. May the record show that. The crowns, the council gave a verbal approval of two hundred and fifty dollars per employee for, uh, their year end. I'm sorry, Georgia.
Minus withholding.
Minus withholding.
Yep.
Minus withholding. Okay, so. We need to pass the, let, let's. Are, are we ready to, uh, Georgia, anything else on, on the agenda for salary ordinance? Okay, uh.
Let's have motion to approve the salary, salary ordinance, uh, for twenty six. Or, organs, number two zero two five dash six five five.
So move, uh. Motion by Chad, second by Steve Han, uh, any, any further discussion? No, uh. Mary Jo, do you have any comments?
I don't, I'm glad we're doing that.
Okay, uh, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, may the record show that the motion passes.
So that was the ordinance, not the bonus, it's separate.
I'll make a motion to approve a two hundred and fifty dollar bonus per employee.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve Han, uh. Any discussion on approving the two hundred and fifty dollar bonus? Now, all in paper, say aye?
Aye, aye.
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 Thank you, Mary Jo, um. That's taken care of, uh. I want to interrupt whatever's on the agenda for a moment here, I want to take care of the guests, opportunity for you to talk about. Unless you're just here to watch, um.
Both. I can't, I'm, I'm not wrong. Uh, one thing I just gotta touch base with on is. The, the walkway, the sidewalk on the corner, the soap pile. Can we get that pushed across the street? Right. Um, I tried, like, hey, you tried to get it. It's hard, I think, I barely got it, but if we could just get it pushed across, I mean, we would have a problem with that and a, uh, guy that parks there is one legged.
Okay.
So it's pretty rough, um.
That was right on the corner?
Yeah, basically it was piled up right there at the crosswalk.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it, I didn't.
I'm afraid it was a new guy.
Well, I don't, I don't, I didn't see, I didn't go down there and look up.
Well, it's not a big deal, I just was like, well, quick, if by chance I get a chance to, just try to get that done. And then, uh. The only other thing I had was, uh. Of course, I can't talk in the right thing, I'm sorry. Um. We, obviously some people in town know, we had some little bit of issues up at the store, unfortunately, um. I just want to touch base with the guys, they did a great job. Um, they handled it great, it is better than I would have. Cause it would have went differently. Uh. But. I'm glad that, uh, we got that, got, seen the, seen conclusion of that, of some, some, something dealt with there. Uh, I seen a lot more activity out there, pulling some cars over the corner. Super excited about that. Uh, but other than that, that's it, so I got, well, I was trying to get here in time to check on the house. I got the tail end of it, but I didn't get to hear the beginning part, I'm sorry.
On the.
The house on the corner of Winans and, and. Jewett.
It's going into essentially foreclosure and, uh, hopefully have depth of humanity will be the eventual owner of it.
His mom just owns that store, so.
Oh, yeah, it's mom and dad's house.
Uh, I, yeah, yeah, hopefully.
So, I got a bit of interest. Well. We can think about it, wh- whatever we got some time, sounds like, let's gotta get a judgment first.
Yes.
Then it's gonna go to Sheriff's Dale, sounds like.
Yes.
So will that be documented as far as, like, now it's gonna take place?
Yes.
So if we.
In about sixty days.
But that, I'm excited to see something done with it, cause.
You and so.
Yes. Um. So, yeah, I'm glad to see some, like, some, somebody said, called, they ca- uh. They called and said somebody's taking some trees down there, but I didn't, I wasn't in town, I was out of town, so I don't know what they were talking about, I didn't really get a chance to see it.
I don't know.
Is anybody?
They might have trimmed it up a while back.
Okay.
They might have trimmed up. Like, we.
Yeah, it was, I was gone, so. Yeah, I didn't know what tree they took or what they did.
They go tree the bar.
That, right, they went and planned toward the garage? Yes, it was, yeah, and it's gone?
It's gone.
It's gone, welcome, okay, I'm really excited now. Alright, thank, thank you guys, I'll just get out of here. Yeah, it is, dude, cause I, I was scared to death of that tree, as a matter of fact. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
But I don't see any of you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, you too.
Adios. Sir.
Yes, sir.
Do you, you're just here for, like, to watch town board meetings?
Don't be introducing, yeah, my name's Bart Cole and I'm a new deputy town marshal here.
Oh.
And uh.
Still the thunder, first part means.
Yeah, I uh, I was asked to come last time, but I didn't know where the town hall was. I really didn't, so uh, anyway, um, I worked battleground before, I was with the Tipton County Job Task Force. For five years, and um, worked Purdue for eleven, and I'm glad to be here. First time I was in battleground, I think I was fourth, in fourth grade, I get in the battlefield. So I grew up in Clinton County, and uh. Glad to be here, so.
Thank you for deciding to join the force, you know?
I'm happy to be here, I know Fred from working over West Side, BJ did some training out there at Purdue. Chad, I know your face, I've been over uh Lockyette, some of the task force stuff, so.
But you know, geek out.
Yep, so uh, did twelve years in the Marine Corps, and um, kinda, kinda slowed down a little bit, so.
Congratulations on that effort.
Yeah, thank, thank.
Yeah.
But uh, again, really happy to be here.
Great.
So not only does uh, Sergeant Cole bring the military experience, but he's also got significant nonprofit experience as well, so he understands. Uh, a lot of that world, and uh, it's just with his training and background, law enforcement, it was a, it was a pretty easy choice, and uh, we made of course in. A lot of ways to to get him to join, so we're very, very excited to have him on.
They said I get free boots.
There, uh, there's some cookies in there. Well, it's, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Those are gonna work nights?
No, the, the, we haven't done the schedule, he's still training, sir.
I'm trying to relearn some stuff, because I did six years as executive director uh for a different, I am Gold Star Family Nonprofit. So I'm trying to relearn a few things uh before I release back, because the technology's changed a lot. And I didn't wear a uniform since from two thousand seventeen, but I worked undercover, so I'm trying to relearn some stuff. Okay, so just to be very clear, and I've got some, they've done really good with me so far. And I'm trying to relearn the computer stuff, and that's one of my weaknesses, all right, so, but uh, so far it's going pretty good. But I'm, I'm willing to work nights, I've got, I've got glasses, I'm working on my, my eyesight. Unfortunately, we do have the nice cover to.
Right, uh, Georgia, we, we have.
I, I have a couple more things.
Okay.
Miscellaneous appropriation transaction list. And I'm happy, I need a motion to approve that, um, that transfers for December twenty twenty-five. And mostly I need your approval on this, because the two at the bottom cross. Object codes, they're going from. Supplies to services. And that needs your um approval to cross object codes, the other ones are within. Category, and I just moved things around that we weren't meeting, but those two have to be approved by motion, they'll be canceled.
I'll make a motion to approve the December preparations.
Motion by Chad, second by. Any discussion on this, councilors?
I have a question for, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Um, so did, I just wanted to check the, I know we've got a public safety fund and that. Uh, that renews every year, not renew, sorry, that uh carries over to the next year. General fund line items, don't I, I forgot to ask the part this ahead of time, uh, I apologize. Do the appropriations, do those uh aim to use up? The general line fund items that we didn't spend all of before they get to the public safety?
I'm not sure, because we got a whole raft of them in today, and those were not dealt with at all. So, um, the more advanced notice that you can give me, like, when you. Make a commitment to purchase something, if you can give me an idea of the cost involved, and I can help you track where they go, but. Uh, Vicky literally just opened the envelope today, and I just, I don't have that. They may go on next year. Well, we'll work on it tomorrow, but they're not represented in these transfers.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Okay, um.
I'm sorry, did you finish my motion?
We had a motion in a second, we were in the discussion phase, so.
Okay, thank you for, for hearing that, for speaking, and it, uh, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Uh, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Mary, Mary Jo, even though we're just seeing a white screen, your voice is coming out of the ether.
The, I would like to announce that the. Indiana Department of Transportation has selected battleground for an award of a hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and. Essentially fourteen dollars for road repairs for next year. As a result of our application, um, certainly before Thanksgiving, which is a quick. Will be, we need to go out uh with our bid process for that next spring. March first is the deadline to secure the, for that. We had a. Email that came in with a suggestion, had we ever thought about changing the name Battleground, because it wasn't, uh, does anybody wanna speak to that? Most of the responses I got from council was that that was probably not gonna happen. But I think that someone needs to respond to the individual that sent that in. Yeah, he said, thank you for your interest, and you talked about it, but.
Was that the email about taking down the statue?
It, yeah.
Oh, I didn't understand that they were asking to change the name.
I don't, I don't know, it's something to the effect of Harrison, it wasn't. Appreciate, and I don't know if the individual has ever looked at the monument, because it has all the names, not just. The, not just the Americans.
They defended, I told her, take profits off them.
And had the Navy as well, so it's a monument to both, but I don't know that they actually.
Well, with all due respect, it emphasizes the dominance of this. Of the white settlers.
It does.
And uh, it's, it's not a balanced memorial, if that is what she was kind of getting.
Yeah, it probably is, so I just think, someone really should. If the council has a unified opinion on that. Or more than one person can respond, but I just, someone should. And we had a request, you'll probably deal with this later on, about the. Sidewalk snow removal, your, your concern, I think, coming into this agenda was. The safe route to school, but we also have had individuals who cannot shovel snow for physical reasons. Have tags to keep their sidewalks cleared, and they came in to us and said, but what are we supposed to do? So, um, I don't know if you all read the email that I provided. With an idea from another town that had a volunteer. Appeal, they had an appeal to people, like, if you're willing to help a neighbor, call us and let us know, we'll match you up with someone. Who needs help, and conversely, if you need help, we'll try to match you up with someone who is more physically able and. And help each other out that way.
Does Randy still shovel the snow up town?
I, it, it's all, um.
I have, I have the theme, but, you know, I mean, that, he might be one that. Off to him, and if somebody's got a problem, he.
I just thought it was a community building idea of another town that we might adopt to. To help people out.
I think it has merit, but uh, how's it gonna be organized, and who's gonna be in charge of it, that's above mine, you know, so.
I don't know, but we don't, we don't start asking questions of people, and whatever, so.
Well, and along those lines, um. Making sure the designated uh sidewalk corridor is plowed and cleared. And portions of it are, and portions of aren't, and. I don't, you know, is it, is it worthwhile hiring somebody eh, to contract with somebody eh to. Ensure that it's done from schools up to the, um. To the end, to the park.
I think you're gonna open up a can of worms there.
Yeah. Why?
Well, I mean, so people on this side of the town. I mean, they're gonna, you know, you're using my tax money, and. You're gonna open up the can of worms.
Well.
And I understand what you're saying.
Well, the flip side of that is that we, we authorized twenty thousand dollars to build this dedicated sidewalk for them, okay? So, you know, I think. So you, my comeback to them is that, well, I'm sorry you're not on the designated sidewalk corridor, but it was designed for safety in mind, and. A lot of schoolchildren use this, and it is a safety issue for them, and I don't, I don't care about the rationale.
Is it a choice to walk to school, do the buses stop anywhere if people didn't wanna walk?
Some of my boys were young, they had to meet at the general's. With my granddaughter, she has to walk up to Jefferson and then, so three houses. And then the next stop is gonna be at the, uh, high school picks up at the, uh. And that's gonna be all of Tomahawk and over by your house.
And school. And, and where are those kids going? Are they going to the two schools uptown, or are they going over in the middle? Okay, so.
It's not just Main Street, that we would have to make a commitment.
I mean, we have emailed the PSC Department of Transportation, they'll, they can give us the designated bus stops all around that.
Right.
And we can kind of have an idea where those are and kind of design plan.
Well, in a couple meetings ago, there was two guys from Charlie Ridge that. Said they would. Work on that, did they not? I mean, they said that they go around and shovel people's sidewalks out.
Yeah, uh, all I know is that, two days after the big snow, I saw two or three kids. Riding on the designated sidewalk in the snow, slipping and sliding along, and um. He, I, I, you know, it'd be nice to have somebody dedicated, whenever it snows, to get out there at six o'clock in the morning, or seven o'clock in the morning. Starts to getting tracked on, and at least plow that, you know? And you can justify the design, for, for doing that sidewalk, because it's a designated sidewalk court. So, um, there you are, where do you wanna go with the discussion? Mary Jo, you got any comment?
Well, I just. I, I think, uh, I don't know how quite to say this. I just think people should be responsible for their own sidewalks, and I know that there are some people that cannot shovel theirs. And I think Georgia had a good idea of trying to get together a group of people. That are good shovellers or have snow blowers that could help people out, but that's what ordinances are for. We can't, uh, we can't shovel for everybody.
And, and we're not shoveling for everybody, we're making sure that a dedicated sidewalk is maintained. And.
Right.
If, if we can work out the contracting and the volunteer effort for these tradeouts, or whatever it is, volunteer effort. For these individuals who can't clear it for whatever their reasons are. That, that's fine, but. This, the winter season's gonna be over before it happens.
Right.
And it seems like the, the situation is immediate. What do you want to be, councilors, what?
I think it's gonna be a bad winter.
I, I'm sorry, say it again.
I think it's gonna be a bad winter, I think we're expecting a lot more snow, so.
Could I put together something for the, George's idea about. Creating like a kind of bit of a community.
Absolutely.
I tried to put something together, and at least get a draft out there, see what we think about it, go from there.
Absolutely, you wanna do that?
Hopefully, you all try to have it done by the week before next snow, yeah, and then we can try to put together.
Georgia, was Bill a trustee?
Yes.
Did they, when they come, get the utility bills, whatever, did they have to work so many hours?
No, there's no requirement, it's time I'm talking about.
They quit that, I know when, when I. Where I worked at in town. They had to work so many hours for that money.
They used to help at the cemetery, but. As the insurance reasons, they put you on that, so. Well, I'll pick this topic back up again under the social media thing, but my last thing that I have is that. Somebody came in and suggested that we allow a, an exception for. Contractor trailers that are parked overnight on streets and move the next day to not ticket them. And I don't know how we would identify them, but it seems like a reasonable request, though I guess that's. That's a parking ordinance thing. But those are council. I just wanted to lay that in front of the council and say it was a request, and I think that it has merit. For people who work on, uh, like, say you're doing a remodeling job, if there's somebody. And you wanna leave your trailer there with your tools and things, could they come to town hall and get a tag? Of some kind that they could put and say, that, don't find me, I'm coming back.
What do you think about that, BJ? A trailer parked there to get a, a tag, I mean, if you're doing construction.
The way the ordinance is written, it's just if there's a trailer, that's, that's, that's not hooked up, uh, that's a violation, if they're hooked up to a vehicle, then they have twenty-four hours. So, if council wants to change that, you're welcome to.
I mean, how many do we actually have?
There's been one request in ten years that I've been here, but I, I understand the issue. It was a lousy night, and he didn't want his trailer dragging it home in the snow, or whatever, and so he left it. Overnight, came back for it the next day and.
I, I would also say that anybody that's got a special circumstance, the way that we've done it since I started working here, is that if you let us know. Ahead of time what your special circumstance is, um, eh, we, we have discretion, so we're not gonna. Try to make your life miserable when it's already miserable that night for a different reason, and that's why you had to do what you hadn't do, so. So the LSA dispatches.
Yeah.
Accepts no tow and no tag requests, uh, for vehicles, if they're gonna be, if they broke down and. Need forty dollars to get the vehicle out, that kind of thing, we, they'll, they'll accept a no tow, no tag request, and put it out to the, they're all officers, they're aware. So, the, pretty standard thing to see quite good, so.
They, they just need to take the corrective step of life and stone.
Great, um, I said so pretty easily, anything else, Georgia?
Well, not till we get to the social media.
Well, in that case, Mr. Moyers.
Right, um, sorry, be great, yeah, just, both, the guests already left, but I, I really appreciate their uh support. You know, when we're told that we're not visible, we're not making stops, especially at the five, where it's nice to have people specifically say. That we're gonna be good, make it stops by way, so, oh, nice to hear that, um. Uh, I was gonna have Brian Dur here tonight, he's still on medical leave, uh, that's, that's ongoing, he's in recovery. Um, with the ordinance, I know that, um, uh, part of Fred have been out, made numerous contacts for the ice. That, obviously, there's discretion in that, we, when we give a warning on a residence, we don't know. Who has a specific physical issue, disability, or a reason they can't do it, um, that's what the warning is for, right, and then they call in and let us know. Um, I, I couldn't, for some reason, find the email, the people that, that came into, came in or contacted the town about that, was that, Georgia, where was that sent to? I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
We didn't, I don't think she contacted you, I think we gave, uh, it was two ten Sherman, we gave them your number. To leave a message.
Okay, um, it, like, again, if we, if we know about it, then we can take an action, if uh, we don't, then just following. How the, how we typically do business, there'll be a citation, so, uh, we just need to know about those things, um. But uh, but yes, there's.
Is the phone number for the call on the one tone? Because I didn't actually see the tag.
I, I believe it's at the bottom. Uh, so, yeah, so continue doing ordinance, uh, a lot of ordinance enforcement. Uh, so yeah, so continue doing ordinance, uh, a lot of ordinance enforcement recently because of the. Slit sidewalks, um. Uh, one of seven building update, I know we've reached out, I think between Chad and I, and six different vendors for bids, I've heard, I've heard back them too. Saying they were busy, so that's that's ongoing, I don't know.
I've not heard anything that.
Well, we'll see on that, um, for, it seems like contractors, that's the business to be in, they. Are usually pretty backed at projects. The uh, the shotguns were purchased, that was approved, I believe, the last meeting, uh, those came in under the the amount. Uh, so that was, that was good, they were a hundred dollars under what was approved. Yeah, you you've met uh Officer Cole, but we're again extremely. Satisfied with how he's come along with training, the work he's doing, uh, and uh. He's gonna do great things for the town and for us, uh, dresses way nicer than I do too, so. Uh, we can uh. We'll go with that, um. Yeah, uh, the um, really, that's, I I don't have much of an an update past that, um, the uh, sort of. Anything you had. Just refresh my memory. Um, I know we're we're still in the train phase. I I also uh. Um, give praise to uh Chad, he rode with me for a shift and came onto that and saw some of. The the complaints of what we get firsthand, which is is nice, like uh, things like RVs and stuff like that, so. Um, that that offer is still available for ride alongs to any board member. Um, no mistake in the stuff on it, but Chad, so uh, we appreciate that. Educate yourself. Um, I know there's been questions on training and training requirements, things like that, uh, so just. I mean, did you have anything? Okay, so for. Yeah, we probably should get the ride in the front, so, um, yeah. They, I know, but I know there's been questions on training and training requirements, so I don't have much of a. Anything needed from the board uh for our time here, is there any questions on that that you know you have? I just wanna stress that uh. Uh, training is is pretty important in terms of minimizing liability, and and that's something that we will. Not be shooting to the bare minimum, we'll be making sure that we're very well trained upon it, so.
Can I bring up something? Just if it comes to town marshals in general. We just had a shooting. And involving Kirkland Town Marshals in Quentin County. And it was in Michigan town because they're short on town marshals. And uh, we just had an officer that retired. From Lafayette, seasoned officer, um, I won't say his name, I almost did. But he was shot in the face and through the shoulder. And uh, the other officer that was a deputy uh town marshal. He was actually a deputy full time with Quentin County. So, uh, he was shot in the chest. With his vest on. So, trained officers. Still. You don't fix city issues. Um, that it came up that way. And I'm telling you right now, we got big city issues that are in this town. A devil, one of the heaviest of blows that I've seen is. Originated. From battleground address. Years ago, you're still here. So, you still have issues that are here in this town. Uh, and it could happen anytime. Those two officers, one from Lafayette, I think twenty seven years on. A storied career. Where that happened, so the training really matters too. You know, and they still got eight rounds on the bad guy. Whoa. With those rounds hitting them. Okay, it comes to training. It re- it really matters. And that was on a very foggy night, so foggy. In fact, they put life saving skills on. Uh, the officer that got uh wounded. And they couldn't get air to him, air assets, because it was so foggy. And they had ground med back him. You know, the responding officers that stopped that bleeding. Could get him initially to ambulance, but get him further care down in Indianapolis. So, that's why training is important.
Not a stressful situation, there I did.
I appreciate you bringing that up, I I. Able to remember that, the uh, yeah, that was, that was another very small town. Very small town, town marshal uh. Agency and uh, we we know that individual personally, um, and and that's why when I. It it is frustrating when I hear things like, well, how little of training can we can we do? And and what are the minimum requirements of training, uh, because that's, that's just not how we're gonna do things, uh. It would be archaic to go backwards and uh, just for moments like that, so. We we take our job very seriously and and uh. Appreciate the board's recognition of that. Thanks for listening, guys. Yeah, so a lot of times you don't know what you don't know, right?
That's, that's a big problem, you know, lack of it, lack of good information. Uh, ne- next item on the agenda. Are we? DJ, no, are we done?
Are you gonna address the one that you called about the? Speed limit request in? Hawks Nest?
I apologize, but I was saved to last week. What what's those people?
Occasionally, somebody will call in from Hawks Nest. Because the speed limit there is thirty miles an hour, just like it is every grand town. And she said, why can't you post like it's posted in Shawnee Ridge? And correct me if I'm wrong, she said it's twenty miles an hour in Shawnee Ridge, and I said, well, I think that's because. Twenty five. I think that's because the homeowner association posted that. When it was not part of the town background, but we never changed the signage. But her point is. We never changed the signage, and I was told long ago, we can't enforce the twenty five mile an hour even though it's posted. Because the market ordinance is thirty miles an hour.
It it depends on how it's written into George's.
She, she said people fly down the Legos. And she thinks it's a hazard to the people who live there. And she doesn't know what to do about it, and I didn't have any answer for her, but I thought if I brought it up. At a meeting, she couldn't get here. But um, I have her name if anybody wants to talk.
Pass that on to us, so the, uh, we we triage from where we're and try to sp- spread around where we're doing enforcement, uh, we. Now, what do you wanna? What speeds zone you make, how many signs you post, that would not be a police. Decision or even within our authority to do so, uh, we would just enforce it. Um, we we do patrol in the neighborhoods, we make traffic stops in those neighborhoods, uh, if there's something specific. That a specific area, things that they want extra patrol with. Um, they were welcome to let us know, we try to give those a little more focus, uh, as able, uh, that's pretty common. Amongst departments and um, uh, you know, really what it comes down to is, can we get more? More patrol hours, um. And you unfortunately, you can't get more patrol hours and less budget, you have to have. The budget match the amount of hours that you're looking for in patrol, so, but we can certainly do extra patrol if people want to pass on her.
Wasn't really extra patrol that I was heading for.
What were you heading for?
What, what I was thinking was if we could talk to her. And have her um. Help us with, is it one car? Is it, maybe it's just one kid. Maybe it's one adult, maybe it's uh, one grandma, but maybe it's just one car. Is it one person that's exceeding the speed limit a lot, or is it? Really a, an issue where? Somebody patrolling would actually find.
And and that's a, that's a good information. Was that her concern, was it the, the posted speed limit?
But she just thinks that there's too many people that live at the far north end of Legos that use that straight shot street. As their runway and they. They gear up while they're going north. Or south, and she thinks it's dangerous to the people who live there. I'm thanking her, she thinks it's dangerous for her.
Yeah, that that's, sounds like an extra patrol call, it. Where was uh, where does that turn into us? I'm sorry, but I don't know that.
I just brought it to the council because part of it is. Something that they would have to deal with, are we gonna post Fox Nest and Shawnee Ridge the same?
Sure, any complaints about speed?
So that's why I'm bringing it up to the council and not just dropping it into the. Police department for an interview with her, but that's where I left it with her, that she would have to. Help us identify what time of day, who, you know, who it is, if it's more than one car.
And we'd be happy to get that information from her.
She was gonna work on that and then we'll get back to you and we have something to give you, and that's all I'll say.
Oh, okay, so we're hearing about it just now, uh, but we're happy to work with her if you wanna encourage her to come back.
Hawks Nest and Shawnee Ridge, they connect, correct? I just feel like if the two neighborhoods correct connect, shouldn't we have the same speed throughout?
You would think.
Do you wanna increase Shawnee?
No, I wanna decrease Hawks Nest. Yeah, the idea of decrease Hawks Nest.
Apparently, we don't have any. Any lower speed limits than thirty, thirty, any of the streets.
Okay.
Fair, apparently.
So we'd have to adopt a a separate ordinance swiftly for Hawks Nest. And all those streets to make twenty five.
Are we, are we good on a discussion for signage? Speed limits?
Yeah, we have an action item.
And? What's the action item?
To decide if you're gonna change your ordinance or not.
Well, we'll look into. We're gonna have to find that ordinance first and read it.
Yeah, and make a suggestion.
Thanks for having, go from twenty five to thirty? I truly don't know how many.
Right, I mean.
I can't think of any off hand. There might be one or two, but there's not that.
A lot of times we go on the main drag, a lot of times the side streets, you don't see many. So. They, I grew up in, that was a place. They were going through, you have to sign, and none of the side streets.
And that's why we have default speeds zones.
But I, I think what Dr. just said about working with a lady to try to. Is it just one kid, or is it one per car, or whatever, you know? Get the color of the car and see where they live and. Flat tire or something. Strike that.
So, so not to make this conversation even a little. But I, I live in Shawnee Ridge, and so it's kind of an aha. That the, I never knew the speed limit in the entire town was thirties, I had no idea. I know the signs say twenty five on my street, so. That's one form of reference, but, so for me, wh- what is the speed limit in in Shawnee Ridge? Is it thirty? By ordinance? The sign is meaningless.
It looks other way, yes.
Alright, so you know, it is what it is, right, but. Just for me to know what's going on, um, I think people drive too fat, too fast through the neighborhood anyway. Because little kids. So I kinda wish it was twenty five, I don't know how the council deals with all of that, but.
Sounds like there's some motion to, some energy to reduce everybody to twenty five, make it consistent.
Sounds, I mean. Neighborhood closely. Houses close together.
Just for us, for enforcement, it does just have to be posted. Yeah, 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 in a pretty visible way with permanent signs, uh, again, be listed on the ordinance. I'll pull the ordinance and look at it.
Okay, uh, and and uh, George, are you done? Mr. Ron. You're up, you.
All right, the biggest thing I have for tonight is I would like to take the uh. Send the leaf back to brown equipment. For. It sounds like a high number, forty nine thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, for a complete rebuild. Uh, a brand new one is now a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, with that. They would uh, complete service on the engine. Uh, drain and flush the whole hydraulic system. Uh, change belts, uh. All new gauges. On the display, a new, new PTO assembly. The uh, new power monarch system. Is the start. This start port. Rebuild the screens on the top. A new suction hose. And the supports. Uh, rewire the whole machine. Uh, there's, I think there's two lights that worked on that machine right now, and there's like twenty, twenty seven lights on it. Uh, so they totally rip out all that wiring and replace it. Disassemble the whole axle assembly and rebuild it. New bearings, new brakes, new everything. So basically, we'd get it back uh, minus a paint job, which. I refuse that because they want eight thousand for paint up. Uh, it would be basically a brand new machine. And. Typically, we get thirty eight to forty loads. At least a year. Uh, this year, we've, we've gotten forty five. Because of the snow, I'll probably take the backhoe and the dump trailer to get the rest, because. Once you get snow in, it's really hard on that machine to. Suck well, so.
How long have we had that machine?
It's a nineteen eighty nine.
Twenty five years old.
Honestly, uh. When Matt mentioned. The savings that we had in store order. Uh, he thought it was building to dry. Uh, I contacted him to buy a new machine. Uh, their sales guy came out and looked at our machine. He said I would, he said you have the catalog. He said this is second to none to anything new.
Interesting.
Okay, so what I'm hearing Ron say, uh, we wanna spend close to fifty thousand dollars to refer the, the leaf back.
Kind of warranty, yeah, just curious. Is it, do they guarantee they work for eighty nine years? Uh, I mean, you may have it in front of you, which.
Dad did. Did not, did not ask. But I keep.
Wanna make sure it's not like a ninety day thing and then we're out.
Right.
Yeah, so that, something that goes sideways.
So, it's brown equipment, and the guy that came out and talked to me was uh. Been in. He left West Lafayette.
Is there a time of? Stamp on this to get to this quote or to do this work, I mean, if we table this. For the next meeting or whenever, I mean, when do you need the decision, I guess is what it boils down to.
Uh, as soon as I can get to them. I can get back, uh. Cause I'm assuming the town will want me to go. The five days in the spring, I guess.
It's probably pretty correct.
We've done it for what, five years now?
Uh, how long would it take them to do it? Month and a half?
Uh, I think he said it for two months. I mean, we, if if we wanna wait through January, we probably could. Uh, if it's something that you guys wanna approve, and then I find out warranty and I can give you guys the call.
I'm not super concerned about that, I just don't want it to be super short even. Like, I like to see that and be guaranteed for at least a little bit, if we're gonna spend that kind of money on it.
Well, and if we're gonna do the detailed work. I mean, basically. The hydraulic tank and to clean it and. That's getting down to.
No, I.
Significant.
Trust the words.
That's your company that does that?
What's that?
That's the only company that does that?
I would say no.
Should we get another, should we get another bid?
I would, best two.
Is it their machine?
It it was originally bought off of them. The town had bought that machine and uh, the street sweeper.
Couldn't we get another bid or another estimate?
I I can. Try, I mean.
If you got the list of what they're gonna do, I mean, you get another estimate and tell them.
Right.
This is what we want.
Right.
And then maybe come back next, you know, next meeting. I think it's a good idea. Your comparison.
All right, the next thing I have is uh. Burke Engineering, which is our MS four engineering group. I'd like to. Go into a contract with them to get me completely ready for EPA. I don't know a hundred percent what's going on. But the EPA ability isn't lacking a few things that IGM is doing. Uh, right now, EPA is in Ohio. Uh, and they are checking every. Town. City. So basically. It's not to exceed ten thousand. I I I truly don't believe it'd take that much. That's because we all my digital files. The digital mapping and all that, that I'm not capable of, right? And getting uh, inspection sheets and everything. And get me set up on a filing system and all that. And get reset upon a filing system and all that.
So what exactly are you asking?
It was approved at ten thousand dollars.
Not exceed ten thousand dollars.
This consultation, I believe.
Both of the engineering.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And that would be in your form all over that.
I mean, I'm willing to bet that if you fail this audit, it's gonna cost us a hell of a lot more than ten thousand dollars.
Well, it's federal.
Yeah.
I'm not interested in.
And you're saying it's coming out of stormwater?
Yes.
Any problem with that, Georgia? Motion to approve up ten thousand dollars for Ron's consultation with Burke Engineering? Any discussion? Yeah, no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes, you're, you're gonna go, Ron. Um, what else we got?
Uh, so Saturday. During the snowstorm, uh, we were training our new guy on the, uh. Two thousand and eleven F three fifty. Jansen was training. And we, uh, we've had a plow being broken out.
Actual plow, huh?
Yeah, it's pretty impressive. Twenty one years I've never had that happen.
I mean.
So, I mean, part, the parts were gonna be thirteen hundred dollars, uh, but we. Did a bunch of welding, we, we totally stripped it down to nothing. Uh, we've done all the welding and we're about ninety nine percent put back together. I had to go today and get, uh, new hoses and. Uh, a new skid plate for the plow. But, uh, so that's coming back together and, uh, the next time I'll be with me. In my report, you seen that we had a plug last Friday? At Wood Church, uh, I unfortunately was off, but I got a call from Bowing Bird Panic. As the wet wall was rising. It was the same check route as last time. And I think I figured it out, um. Our pumps will kind of grind up a little bit of stuff. Even though they're not holding up both grinder pumps. But to put a four inch trash pump, that's just gonna let everything fly. Uh, yeah, without grinding anything up.
I got it.
Uh, so, I don't know where we're at, we're phase two or three.
Couple years out.
No, I get that. Uh, as soon as we separate, um. Hawks Nest from. I would like to, for the future, I'd like to go ahead and cut that pipe.
Yeah, take that valve out.
And take that valve out, uh, just for, I don't wanna. That way I can schedule it and I can do it what I want, not in the middle of the night when it's ten below, so.
Any problem with that? Makes sense, absolutely.
I just wanted you guys. I did plug again, but this time we didn't search the whole pipeline before we found it.
Yeah, so as soon as that's rectified, get it on.
Yes.
Um, anything else?
Only other thing I have is, uh. Tuesday, uh, I had the backhoe up in the additions. Up on the hill. Uh, busted ice. Uh, I hit a little drop in the pavement. And I put the back window out, on the back.
It's a little cool in there now, isn't it?
Not too bad.
Okay, no problem.
Too bad.
I assume that you'll get a text.
Correct.
I'm trying to find pressure board.
Anything else for us? How's your new building down there, did it get set?
It has not been.
Okay.
Uh, it is in Willcall.
Oh, oh, really?
Yes. I have, I have three more branches to cut.
Yeah.
Cause he said he absolutely wants twenty foot.
Yeah.
Uh, and we tried to do it last week, went up with windy. And I just, I couldn't, I couldn't handle it.
Okay.
Made up in the back of bucket. Trying to cut that.
When's that gonna be delivered?
As soon as I call him, as soon as I make three more connections.
Let me know. Okay. Any questions for Mister Ron? Mary Jo, any questions for Ron?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Um, old business, uh, Georgia, do you wanna talk, or, eh, oh, area plan, sorry.
Yeah. Oh, go with these quickly, um, we just need to make a decision on using old limit one twenty two A. Uh, it was amended, that's the one about.
Gas stations.
Yeah, gas stations, fueling stations, uh, I didn't think last time we brought this up that there was a lot of appetite to approve it. The only, um, primarily because it, it. It lays out designs, besides building materials, all that kind of stuff is detailed in what. What gas stations can be built with and how they should look and all these different things, um. City Lafayette was the, uh, origin of this amendment, uh, so I, I don't think there was a lot of, uh. A lot of, um, appetite to approve this one, so we just need to make a decision one way or the other, so.
What did you do, what I just heard you say is that, let's don't pass it.
But you're right.
Okay.
That's, I, I believe that's kind of where we stand.
Mary Jo, you got any questions for Chad?
No, I, I was thinking the same thing the last time we talked about it.
Right, we're just gonna make an overall decision.
And, I'm sorry?
We just need to make a decision to vote to not.
Okay.
Pass that or not, uh, so make a motion to. Make a motion, uh, to approve.
To approve?
Well, not, not to, well, the motion's to approve it, we're going to vote not. I believe is, I'll just crank out.
I'm confused, but I'm just gonna go with a poll on that, uh, motion by Chad, second by Steve, uh, so. Are we not, we're not approving it?
We're not, yeah.
Okay.
So we're gonna say nay.
Not to approve, but.
Was that? I'll make a motion, motion does not kick, and then.
So Mary Jo said nay.
Right.
Are we all voting nay?
I'm a nay vote as well.
All in favor?
Any in favor says aye.
Any in favor, say aye. There are no ayes, motion fails.
Yes.
Um, thank you, counselors.
That was a little strange. Other one should be a little more straightforward.
Okay.
Um, the, this was introduced last time, we tabled it, but, uh. Um, their plan right now, they're kind of gary, gathering information about data centers, uh, County, I think was. Uh, at least targeted as a, as an ideal location for a data center, uh, so area plan wants to position ourselves to. I guess, make sure that we don't get taken advantage of, um, in here, so, uh, right now, all we're doing is defining what data center is, so it's any. Large building over ten thousand square feet primarily for the, uh, purposes of housing network or certain network computers or servers. So right now, that's probably going to change sometime next year because Windtext Data Center. Uh, is seventy five hundred square feet and they're planning on doing an addition because they're expanding their local business, so. We'll likely update this definition, but as of right now, if we approve this, then we'll be ready to amend this. Uh, going forward next year when it comes up. So, we're just, at this point, just, uh, defining what a large data center is for Tiquan County.
Okay. Mary Jo, you got any questions?
Nope.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash six fifty six.
Uh, second?
And it's, and a discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda, uh, are, are you done, Chad?
I'm all done.
You're done. Um, committee reports, social media for BJ, uh, Battleground. You have?
Does anybody want to view the webinar?
Yeah, all wants to report.
I didn't send that to you, okay.
Okay, no, I, I didn't see it yet, but, I mean, I'm warning, I have to sit through it.
How long does it last?
Forty minutes, maybe, I, I attended it, Ashley would attend it if you decide that you're going to. Think up on the idea of having a social media for the town, she was gonna be the one identified to manage it. But I won't have her watch it until you approve. Going in that direction, I don't know if it's a good idea or not, I just know that a lot of them are. You've got a resource and somebody that would help you with it, but it does fall on the town council to. Determine what's gonna go out there and what's not gonna be allowed, so. It's a, if, if you go that direction, it's a layer of involvement that you haven't had before on how to, um. Market or promote the town.
So what did you, what did you say, Georgia said she might be, she, you all might look at this, but. We are still gonna have to edit the content, the council is gonna be responsible.
Well, we need to give her direction.
Give her directions.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm for it, at least exploring the idea.
And my take is that, at least we'll be prepared whether we go ahead with it or not. Steve, you got a thought on it? Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean.
Yes.
Okay, Mary Jo?
I say yes.
Okay, um, do we need to make a motion or? Okay.
Is there may, I don't know that there's expenses, but there might be, uh, depending on what platform.
Yeah, 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 sure. I'll make a motion to approve, uh. We approved the webinar, we're approving, just moving forward with the social media site.
The webinar was paid for, cause I attended for. The points, so you can view it, cause it's definitely great.
Uh, so, uh, are we approving their social media page or site?
No, just, okay. Ashley, what, what's her name? Ashley, to listen to the webinar.
I'll make a motion for Ashley to, uh, view the webinar, uh, on social media.
I don't need a motion. I need a motion if we're, I thought I was hearing that you all wanted to move ahead with. Selecting a platform and getting something built, that, that was my question.
Oh, I, I, I misunderstood. But, for that to happen, she needs to listen to it.
Well, she can do that on.
Yeah, I mean, I guess so, in terms of this, I mean, Facebook seems like the obvious one. Um, but I, I, I'm not. All unfamiliar with Instagram, that kind of thing, I, but I know it's mostly video images that kind of, that kind of thing that. Generally takes more money to create videos and images like that, cause you get from the software and things like that, whereas Facebook, we can. Pretty much generate that content on our own.
I guess I'd need more information on ramifications and guidance and guardrails put up and whatever.
I can also, along grabbing the, uh. The city Lafayette has social media policy that we can, we can look at, steal from.
Yeah.
In terms of what city social media looks like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so.
Action item for the next meeting, investigate social media policy.
Okay, um, I don't know anything about the recreation committee volunteer.
Oh, that's been on there a couple of times, because I have, uh, someone who would. Want to be involved if you decide you wanna. Get into recreational options in town for people like a little playground or a library or something.
Okay.
I have an invoice under architect information, I have an invoice, if somebody wants to sign it, I haven't seen any product delivered, so. I'm not paying it till I know there's a deliverable available.
And you're talking about the, uh.
Yeah.
Architect information, and do you have an update on that?
Uh, we have the plans, uh, I can afford it to you. Uh, Georgia.
I can pay her because she made a motion in the meeting, but, uh, we have to, I have to know that it was delivered.
I can sign off, but ours has been delivered, we need a disfavor that says that or something, I think I can indicate that on. When I submitted that invoice last meeting, uh, but not, I can't do that for one hundred college.
The one in college, we haven't done, we haven't, we don't have anything yet that, but she's still up on it.
But I think I've already submitted.
So it's all one, it's all just one bill, so I can't, I can't pay half of it.
I, I thought it was per invoice that she sends it.
She just sent one invoice with other things.
Oh, I see. I think that's just it.
And, so, we, we can't do any action order at the moment.
All the people there, no, we'll fix it.
Okay, okay. Any other items that you wanna discuss, counselors?
Department purchases request.
I don't know what that's.
Department purchase.
Yeah, I sent an email, it said she would really help me to have. Information on purchases ahead of these meetings. And I, I get them from Ron, but the police department's a little bit different. And it's hard for me to help you as a group understand, uh, impact on budget figures. I don't know things are coming and. I just emphasize again that knowing what is planned really, really helps me.
Yeah, and that's, that's fair, um, for certain things, uh, we said we can't plan for, uh, that were. Were identified in the reports that come up, but I, I understand what you're saying.
I think we've got invoices today that were dated April, so that's what I'm talking about.
Which one was that?
I don't know, but.
Anyway, okay, the, um, the other thing, it would also make it, uh, easier for me to, to, um. Smooth the process out and make it easier for the courts, if we, cause I know sometimes there's charges like Amazon will, will break them up and they're different. Uh, shipments is what they're charging with the card at a certain time, I know we've talked for over, well over a year about. Us being allowed access to see online our own credit card charges so that we can match them when you. Um, we're still not able to do that, is that something to build the update?
Yeah, that's a secondary issue, but I'm just talking about, um.
And that's of the invoices.
Giving the council. An opportunity to know ahead of the meeting what you're gonna be asking them for at the meeting, so that they can. Ask you questions. I'm sorry.
For purchases under five hundred, as I know I bring it up. Well, if it's overall, bring it up to them.
Trying to get it so that when we have these meetings and we try to, I mean, I'm trying to give more to the council ahead of time. So that you can shoot back questions if you have any about what I planned bringing on, and I just wanna. Encourage the departments to do that too, to give the council an opportunity to understand. What's being presented to you at these meetings.
So my understanding is that if it's a, if it's a item that's over five hundred dollars, then I get counsel for the. Um, whether changes or additions to that council. So, does the council need a different system?
Yeah.
So you do, the council?
No, it's the same system, it's just we need to.
Is it not for items that are, uh, over five hundred dollar?
I thought. Year required to give Georgia itemized invoices for over five hundred dollars.
Has to do with what the departments are giving the council ahead of the meeting. So that it's not new information when we're sitting, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, I think we can discuss with the council further than probably like that, since you did see.
It seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Georgie's the one to consider consideration, hey, look, uh, let me know what the expenses are and how it might impact. Information that's council adds. Yeah, so it's like. Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Any else, please?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Mary Jo, got anything?
Not a, not right now.
Well, if you, if you don't have it right now, it's gonna be closing up pretty fast, I'm gonna ask Ed if he's got anything to contribute also.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mary Jo, it's, it's too late for comments on our official meeting.
Well, if I don't see you guys, Merry Christmas.
To Mary Jo.
Well, well, you're gonna be back in town tonight, aren't you?
I should be back at the gas station in about ten minutes.
Ron, I'm glad you're back.